Good evening, all. I'd like to call this meeting to order, please. Mrs. Barham, can we have roll call, please?
Ms. Anderson.
Here.
Mr. Hopkins.
Here.
Mr. Jones.
Here.
Ms. Page.
Here.
Mrs. Quinter. Madam Chair, the Clerk certifies the presence of a quorum.
Okay, can we please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance? And I will ask that after we say the Pledge of Allegiance, that we stand in reverence for a moment of silence to our sister country, Israel. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, you may be seated. Dr. Horneck, is there any adjustments to the agenda, sir?
Yes, ma'am, we have two. Wanted to apprise the board, we are going to present or do our school accreditation presentations in different ways. We like to do those in November with elementary schools going first and so that we can also have our principals here present to discuss their plans and then secondary schools on the 27th. And also request, I know Mr. Bolus is here from Locust Grove Middle School, and he is here this evening under the first report and recommendation to present an out-of-state field trip. And just to facilitate his time maybe a little bit better, see if the board would be agreeable to let him move up a little bit higher so that he could come and present and then move on with his evening. So, other than that, the agenda is the same.
Would anyone like to make a motion to approve the agenda with those adjustments?
I make a motion, we approve the agenda as presented with the adjustments the superintendent recommended.
Thank you, can I have a second?
All second.
All in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, motion carries. Okay, down to the consent agenda with minutes and financial reports. And... Let me get the numbers. Can I entertain a motion to accept those, please?
Yes, I make a motion, we approve the draft minutes for July 10th, the September 2023 financial report and the food services report as presented.
Thank you, can I have a second?
Second.
All in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, the motion is accepted. Monthly operating bills. Can I have a motion to accept this?
I move to approve the September 2023 monthly operating bills of the amount of $6,630,544.35.
Thank you, can I have a second?
Second.
All in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, motion carries. To the next, recognitions.
Yes, ma'am, thank you, madam. Chair members of the board, this evening, we have four areas. I'm going to start with Mr. Rutter, Marshall. I'm sorry. If it's okay, we can let Mr. Bolus come forward first and do the field trip and then we'll bring you up, Marshall, sorry. Mr. Bolus, thank you, sir.
So, every year before COVID, you guys have graciously allowed me to take my sixth-grade band to the Kennedy Center and usually one of the Smithsonian museums for them to experience art, history throughout the day. Since COVID, we haven't been able to do this and this is the first year that the Kennedy Center is offering their performance again for school groups. And talking to the sixth-grade teachers, they were like, can we do something like this? Because we talk all the time about getting the kids out of the Chromebooks, get them out of technology. This is a great example where they get to go and experience a live performance of one of the world's best orchestras and the performance is geared specifically to them. And so the kids really get excited about it and we wanted to take them to the American History Museum, which ties into their SOLs. I've already talked to my sixth graders that this might be something that we might be able to do this year. And one of the things that really got me was some of them were like, I've never been to a museum. And some of them were like, I've never been to a concert. I don't know, they're like, I've never been into anything. My parents just, we don't do anything like that. And this is one of the things I think that we can provide as educators and experience that even if they don't do this again, hopefully they will, but give them that opportunity to go. I know cost is a big thing that you guys have to consider. We are looking at trying to do fundraisers, find ways to make sure that we bring the costs down as much as possible for the kids. So I ask that you guys look at what we've proposed and hopefully approve a trip for the entire sixth grade. Do you guys have any questions for me?
Sounds very exciting.
Thank you.
So, would anyone entertain a motion to accept this?
I would make the motion, I'll move to approve the field trip as requested.
Can I have a second?
Second.
All in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, motion carries.
All right, thank you, Mr. Bolus. Appreciate it. Thank you, madam chair, members of the board. Now we'll move to recognition. So, Marshall, we will start with you and then we'll bring up our friends from the primary school. Okay, so Robin and Lee, you guys will be after Marshall. Then we'll have Unionville and then Lightfoot. Mr. Rutter.
Thank you, Dr. Horneck, Madam Chair, members of the board. Mrs. Bernard, will you please come up here?
Hey, Ms. Bobby.
Right by Marshall. Tonight, I come before you to recognize Mrs. Bobby Bernard. Since May of this year, Bobby has been a crucial part of the facilities department with the current absence of our admin assistant. During this time, Bobby has taken on many additional duties to support Mr. Arnold and myself. She handles all our purchase orders, pays all our invoices, pays all the utility bills, processes pay apps, processes time cards for substitute custodians, processes facility use requests and orders all the parts for the maintenance team. She does this each and every day with a smile. The benefit of Bobby handling and taking care of this, taking on this additional load ensures that no box is left unchecked. All the i's are dotted, t's are crossed and there is no decimal out of place. It gives me great pleasure this evening to shed light on this incredible effort that will continue through the end of the calendar year.
Good evening, members of the board. Dr. Horneck, it's good to be here again, recognizing excellence in Orange County. Today, I'd like to share with you three important members of our school team. I have Ms. Ann Petty and I have Ms. Fay Shiflett and Mr. Robert LaLiberty. And each of these folks are custodians in our building. I share often or sometimes that each person in our building is an educator. Every single person that is employed by Orange County Public Schools and serves our students is an educator. Bus drivers, teachers, principals, custodians. And I would like to attest that these are three of our finest in Orange County. I've been at Locust Grove Primary School for quite some time and I can say from experience and from my knowledge and my observation as a principal that the building looks as good as it ever has. And I know that that's due to the efforts and the dedication of these fine folks here. When I say educators, I see them interacting with students and at lunch, in the hallways. Their modeling excellence in everything that they do. They show up to work on time. They go above and beyond in what they need to do to make sure that the building and the facilities are clean and safe and that helps our students learn. So, thank you for everything that the three of you do. And Dr. Weaver is here joining us to recognize them as well and as the AP of our school. So, thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Good evening, members of the board and Dr. Horneck. Appreciate you all having us here tonight. I would like to recognize two of my new staff members, two of my new teachers to Unionville. First, I have Ms. Stingo here. She is a second-grade teacher and she has embraced an inclusion and an ELL cluster with grace. She comes at each day with a high level of compassion, eagerness and commitment to all of her students and that they are important and that they can meet her high expectations. And her students do just that. They're succeeding and thriving in a positive and nurturing environment. She collaborates with many staff members throughout the school day, including her special education teacher, the ELL teacher and the reading specialist. They all ensure that her students are academically achieving. I'm very fortunate that Ms. Stingo chose Unionville and I hope to have her for many, many years. And then second, I have Ms. Floyd here, who is a kindergarten teacher at Unionville and she embraces each day with enthusiasm and a lot of love for all of her students. She has embraced both structured literacy and the math workshop, attending both of those professional development opportunities during the course of this school year. She asks great questions and she puts into practice her new teaching methods with her students. Each and every day, as Ms. Floyd puts her kids on the bus, she says, "I love you." And I have no doubt that she means that she loves them and that they love her back. Again, I am fortunate that Ms. Floyd chose Unionville and I look forward to her touching kindergarten lives forever and ever.
Good evening, board and Dr. Horneck. This is one of my favorite things to do, to come and recognize our staff and I'm starting today with recognizing some of our students today from Lightfoot. So, we have some students here that we would like to recognize, their teachers and myself, for their motivation and their progress in literacy last year and into this year. We've... I'm going to do your awards and then we're going to all wait to go up for a picture though, okay? Okay, all right. And we have one student who's actually going to have a teacher read something. But we do have some family members here with our students that we would like to recognize for your support, for coming to our events and supporting your students with reading and studying every night because you are our students' first teachers. So, we have Paisley Barniac. She's not here tonight. Okay, we have Noelle Billings. We have Kaylin Codill. Brynlee Garrett. And Peyton Lehman. So, we've worked really hard on changing what we do in our reading program with structured literacy and there's two components. We have one component that our teachers have worked with them called IMSE, which is the multi-sensory piece of the phonics side, which is research-based, Orton-Gillingham, that these students work on with their teachers, as well as making sure last year and then this year that all of our students are in appropriate grade-level text. And so we have Ms. Burris here, who's going to share something that Brynlee wrote. So, Brynlee Garrett was kind enough to write for us a little bit about what we do in my classroom and Mrs. Martin's classroom. So, I'd just like to share what she wrote today. Everything I love about reading with Ms. Burris. At the end of the week, if we have all of our Lexia units, we get 20 minutes of free time every Friday or Monday. On Monday, we can get a prize for getting Lexia units. Me and three other friends are reading The Westing Game and we're on chapter 14 in the book. And we note that there is a guy named Sam W. Westing that was missing and one of the characters found him dead in his bed. Now, they have eight groups of two, but one of the groups did not show up to the meeting. So, they can't get the $10,000 and they don't get to play. On a normal day, our four of us come in here and read The Westing Game and the other three people come in at another time that don't read The Westing Game. And when they come, we do sound cards and sounds and blends in our red wordbook. And on some days, we spend five minutes on skill builders and then we do Lexia. I hope you love it. Good job, Brynlee. And then we have some recognition for some of our teachers. We have Ms. Burris, who you just heard from, is a special education teacher. And then Ms. Martin, who is a fifth-grade teacher. And they collaborate to make sure that all of our students succeed at Lightfoot. Ms. Burris and Ms. Martin define what it means to collaborate. They have worked hard to make sure all their students are in the grade-level text with support as needed. They've learned how to get students into the grade-level text with a structured literacy and the instruction for students who need specific structures tailored to their needs. Ms. Martin has spent a lot of time in professional development, learning how to build word knowledge and world knowledge. And likewise, Ms. Burris has spent a lot of time learning how to implement the IMSE, the multi-sensory approach to learning phonics. Together, they have seen an improvement in our SOL scores, growth scores, MAP score and assessments in the classroom, but most importantly, in the motivation and success in our students every day. Ms. Martin and Ms. Burris work closely with our instructional assistants to make sure students get that tailored instruction. And we have Ms. Hamilton, right there, who's at Lightfoot, her second year, and Ms. Ratcliffe for her 13th year. And they're very positive and willing to help all of our students succeed. They know how to ask questions and give support to our students, including Lexia lessons and writing support. Together, this team works together with administration and our parents to make sure that our students receive the best services and education that we offer. So, thank you to this Lightfoot team. Before we move on, I do have one special award tonight for Ms. Ratcliffe. She was nominated for the 2024 Rise Award. This December, the Virginia Department of Education and the United States Department of Education will review the nominations and present state and national awards honoring school staff in support roles, including paraprofessional, clerical administrative services, transportation services, food and nutrition services, custodial and maintenance, security, health and student services and skilled trades. This nomination is a part of Virginia's campaign to elevate educators. Orange County has nominated Ms. Ratcliffe for her excellence for working to help maximize the potential of Virginia's children in a school setting. And this is the nomination for Ms. Ratcliffe. Ms. Ratcliffe is an exemplary veteran special education instructional assistant at Lightfoot. She defines what it means to be a special education instructional assistant, truly a teacher. She is a resource, support and mentor to our students during the school day and also during our extended school day tutoring. She makes sure that she works with the special education lead teacher and other IAs and inclusion teachers to make sure students have equitable access to the curriculum through scaffolds and supports. Indeed, Ms. Ratcliffe is the model instructional assistant for our school for making sure she models the school rules, especially kindness. She recognizes students with positive tickets and positive office referrals more than any other staff member. She participates in greeting and meeting families at such nights, at such events such as reading night, open house and back-to-school night and also greeting and thanking our families who are bringing their students for the extended day. Ms. Ratcliffe always volunteers to be part of the superintendent's support staff committee, making sure to stay positive and focus on solutions, enhancing the positions of all staff in Orange County. Ms. Ratcliffe starts our day and closes our day by greeting and thanking our bus drivers in rain and sunshine. And truly, Ms. Ratcliffe is the sunshine at Lightfoot and in Orange County.
And I'd like to say, if you are a parent of one of these students, would you please stand? Ms. Ratcliffe, Ms. Ratcliffe. I can't wait to go to Richmond and tell them that that teacher is from my division. Thank you.
So, a couple of things of note, Ms. Ratcliffe, that's incredibly well-deserved. For those of you who may not know, Virginia is embarking on a very large scale, and we'll talk about it this evening, tutoring plan for All In. And Lightfoot was well ahead of the curve. Has it been the last month now, Mary Lee? For the last month, Lightfoot has been doing some high-intensity on-grade-level tutoring before school from 8 to 9. And they have had each day 40 to 50 students, Mary Lee, is that accurate? 40 to 50 students. You did two days a week for your language arts, two days a week for math. And Ms. Ratcliffe has been in there every day, 8 to 9, before the workday starts, along with Ms. Wayne and a number of other folks. But just putting the time in to help our students. And so that does not go unnoticed. So, congratulations for that award. It's very well-deserved and we hope that you bring home everything at the state and the national level as well. And I'd also like to recognize Dr. Weaver. Robin, wave to everybody, there you go. So, Robin comes to us and I'd like to thank the board for their support. If you remember last year, upon Mr. Berry's retirement, we made a commitment to do everything we can to invest as much into our schools. And the savings from salary and benefits went directly to two school-based positions, Dr. Weaver's being one of them. So, we no longer had to split an assistant principal at the Locust Grove Primary and Elementary site. And so we have challenges that we face, as well as a number of successes, but we are really focused on real solutions. And you heard a little bit tonight, you can see from a staffing angle, from a reorganization of central office to the importance of our support staff, as well as to, Ms. Grubb talked a lot about IMSE and literacy. And so, both our, both groups at Unionville and Lightfoot have spent a lot of time, as well as all of our elementary and primary schools, making sure that our teachers are trained in IMSE and the science of reading to make a difference for our youngest readers, where the foundations are truly built. So, I think it's important that the community know that this administration and this school board are focused on real solutions to the issues that face us. We take those challenges very seriously. We invest time, money into the professional development for our staff members and we are willing to put in the time with our students, whether it's during the instructional block, during flex time that we might have during the day or before and after school. And the board will hear a considerable, considerably more this evening when we talk about our All In spending plan, about our initiatives K-12 across the board to combat pandemic-related learning loss. So, in the times that we are in, it's really important to know that your school division stands with your students and we are going to work with you to make sure that they get everything that they need. So, Robin and Mary Lee, Lee, all of you who presented folks this evening, it's an honor to hear the stories about them. Each one makes a difference. Thank you, Madam Chair and members of the board, for indulging us. And for all of you who were here for recognition, if you would like to head out, please feel free to do so before we get to the next part. Thank you all for coming out and supporting Orange County Public Schools.
I actually think there's some pictures floating around with you on the floor with some of those kids, isn't it?
That's my buddy Ben with, yes.
So, is it Judy and Renee that's got those pictures?
I think one was coming.
Alrighty, so at this time, we are down to public comment portion of the meeting. So, I will open public comment and ask Mrs. Byram, has anyone signed up?
Yes, ma'am, we have six, five speakers this evening. The first three are Steve Keeler, DJ Anglin, and Ken Wyvle.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the board, ladies and gentlemen. I heard rumors, so I went and I took a ride. I went down to our football facility to see what I could see. And you know what? The rumors were true. There's a huge blue tarp lashed to the fencing around the football field, and apparently it's there to keep folks from standing outside and watching the games through the fence. I went to see if the facility was ADA compliant also. I wanted to check to see if somebody disabled could come by and get a ticket and get up into the seats or the bleachers, and it looked like it would be difficult at best. But there's light at the end of the tunnel, because after we sell 2,285 tickets to folks who normally never attend a football game, we'll finally hit the mark where we can get that $16,000 back that we spent on that tarp. Can anybody else see why an independent audit is due? It's not that unusual for school systems to do independent audits. While inter-county audits balance checkbooks, independent audits do much, much more. They examine financials and curriculum and teachers and staff. They look at the methods of instructions and the facilities used and the materials that we use. And recently, both Fairfax and Albemarle Counties have recently done their audits. Fairfax had one for risk management of their special education system, which came out looking pretty rough, but Fairfax took the recommendations of the audit and moved forward. And Albemarle County did an overall audit of their K-5 schools at the same time. Audits are never required, but there's so many benefits to them, using them for our schools is a good idea. We need to be constantly looking at ways to improve the school, and if we don't, our schools are going to fall behind. And if you need an example, in 2012, we were ranked 40th in the state. In 2022, we were ranked 80th in the state. There's a couple of board members that will remember that time period as they were here. We must stop the waste, like a $16,000 tarp. An independent audit can do just that. They can show us where we need better internal checks and controls, so that we don't make mistakes like that. They can keep the school system safe from even having the appearance of improprieties that can be devastating to the trust of our citizenship. An independent audit always, always, is very different because of the viewpoint that it has versus the internal audit. I'm going to have to stop it there, I know. I'll let it go. But we do need to be about the business of making sure our kids have the best education possible. That's how we do it.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the board. I'm here to talk about audits as well. I watched a video of a request for an independent audit to be conducted. Should have been a simple request, shouldn't have been hard at all. The request was, like to go out and find somebody who potentially could do this to identify cost savings in our system that's not attached to the county or the school system, somebody to come in and look at it from a completely different perspective. Here we have a new superintendent. I'm sure he would love to find some additional money to help fund some of the initiatives. He wants to help see our students succeed. And we would certainly like to find money to help keep our teachers and keep them here. But instead, from three members of this board, what I heard was almost like you had something to hide. You automatically start up, jumped up, and started fighting against it. And you, sir, hollering at a board member, another board member, over something so foolish. There was a leadership opportunity there. All you had to do was acknowledge that this was a possibility. And you know what? We need to think outside of the box. We need to start saving some money, because times are going to get a lot tougher. And anybody who can't see that's got their head in the sand. We need to look at what we can do differently. We need to identify, is there a potential for cost savings? Some of you work in a state agency or have worked in state agencies. I have. And if you think there's not waste in government spending, then you've never looked, you've never dealt with a state budget, because it exists there every day, and it's tied up in red tape. And sometimes, you just need somebody else to come in and make some recommendations. It doesn't mean you have to follow them. It doesn't mean you have to increase class sizes, and it certainly doesn't mean you have to get rid of teachers. I heard some of the most ridiculous things come from this board in that meeting that night, and I hope I never hear it again. I hope you can actually look at something from a perspective where we can actually start doing some things to make a difference, saving some money, making it better for the children in our schools, making it better for our teachers. I heard people talking about salary savings. Yes, if you have 10 vacancies, that's well over $1 million a year. I know it, you know it. But how we apply those funds, how are we applying those funds? You say, hey, we come up with great ways to do that, but is that the best way? Or are we spending thousands of dollars on tarps so the community who can't afford to show up to a football game can't watch it either? Thank you for your time tonight.
Members of the board, Dr. Hornick. Dr. Hornick, you've been selected to lead Orange County Public Schools, and I'm excited about this choice. Virginia has chosen to lower the standards of learning, yet one of the most impressive things you said when you've made your initial tour of Orange County was that you were going to raise the bar. No one talks about raising the bar today. What a bold statement. Finally, I believe we have a leader. The question is, how does one go about raising the bar? The answer's simple. You do the hard things that are necessary to achieve your goal. This will be a continual challenge to you and your educators as you reinstate the idea of a return to basics in the classroom, where teachers can teach, challenge students to learn, and begin to raise the bar. Although the current challenges must be addressed and resolved, we must not overlook the importance of future opportunities as they present themselves to us. The need for skilled craftsmen is growing at a rapid pace in America. Why? Because as the older craftsmen are retiring, fewer younger people are filling the gaps. Think about your need at your own home for routine repairs and your ability to address them. Think about the commercial buildings that need maintenance, the roadways, bridges, and endless other needs, not just in Orange County, but throughout the United States. Today, we are looking at potentially one of the greatest opportunities Orange County will ever see. What is this opportunity? Wilderness crossing is coming in some form. This is a proposed 30-year development plan presenting a generation of employment opportunities for those who want to live, work, and raise families in Orange County. The initial employment opportunities will be for skilled craftsmen. Where would these trained craftsmen come from? Hopefully, from an Orange County CTE program, which will fill the gap. Currently, there's nothing available to Orange County students to learn the basic skills of carpentry, plumbing, electrical, HVAC, masonry, and so on, to prepare themselves as future craftsmen. During the recent candidate forum, every candidate expressed a need for a functional CTE program. We can no longer wait another 10 years for the school board. We need to start building a real CTE program now. I believe that a strategic plan is desperately needed to now to avoid wasting another opportunity. The plan needs to determine the short-term and long-term goals, as well as setting a timetable. It needs to project staffing levels, equipment, physical space, and the estimated cost to initiate the project. What is missing is a leader to begin the process. You are that chosen leader. There should be sufficient talent within Orange County Public Schools and our business community, along with your leadership, to begin developing this strategic plan now. I believe you as our chosen educational leader are the proper person to lead Orange County's effort to move from the past into the future. My closing thought for you is this. Did you know that if you place a block of wood in front of the driving wheel of the world's most powerful locomotive, that locomotive will not be able to move? Let's remove that block of wood now and allow Orange County to move and launch into the future. Thank you.
The final two speakers are Zach Burkett and Britt Lewis.
A little over a decade ago, I was on the Board of Supervisors. The school board presented us with a budget. And on the first, and of course, we didn't have time to study it ahead of time, but on the first six pages, I found over $1 million in errors. Orange County has an unfortunate history, old history. I'm not blaming anybody here today, but has an unfortunate history of school boards and Board of Supervisors not being exactly straight with the people. It's demonstrated by multimillion dollars' worth of half-empty schools in one end of the county, with old crowded schools in the other end of the county. In a couple of weeks, there will be a new Board of Supervisors. I would think it is an opportunity to maybe change the history that we have had and get some trust going and get some working together between the two boards. That's going to have to start with some real clear numbers, ergo, and independent audit. I can guarantee you, because I've lived in the county plenty long enough, we are up for some serious capital expense in the schools over the next few years, starting with a vocational school of some kind. Probably everybody in this room agrees, we got to have it. It's going to be so much easier and so much better if we can work together and come up with trust on what we really need and how we're going to get it. Thank you.
Hi, good evening. I'm Britt Lewis. I live in District 4. Transparency, I am homeschooling my two youngest children. My middle child graduated pandemic early from Orange County High School, Go Hornets. But I'm homeschooling my two youngest because unfortunately, Orange County cannot support their special needs, and it was proven while one of them was in school. Now, it's not the fault of the board, and I respect that. However, we have an opportunity in front of us, and I watched the same video, and I watched your school board meetings all the time, because I live 35 minutes away. And I'm here today because of Jim. I was absolutely disgusted at the way he yelled at another member, at the way he treated another member, and further disgusted of his statement, and I'll paraphrase, because I don't want to be accusing misquoting. I got rid of teacher positions before, I'll do it again. No, sir, that's not okay. We're not looking to get rid of positions. We're looking to fill them with the best, most qualified people and pay them better. We can't afford to keep losing them to Stafford and Prince William and even Culpepper, that's paying better now. We can't get all these wonderful teachers in, out of college, and them do two or three years to put under their belt, and then watch them leave. That is contributing to the failure of our students in their exams, in their ASL scores, and the fact that we're no longer, as I think has already been said, so I'm not going to beat the dead horse, even in the top 50s, the schools board, schools in the, in the state. An independent audit is nothing to be afraid of. An independent audit doesn't say that you, or you, or you, you did something wrong. It simply says, oh, look, wait a minute, there's money here that we thought was being spent there for this or that, and it's not. We have an opportunity. Well, now, we can build on these additional, you know, post-pandemic programs. We can build on special needs. I know you probably have all read the white paper that the Department of Education has put down slamming special needs across the state of Virginia, because we are all failing. All school boards are failing, and that includes this one. Unfortunately, it does. We're not giving the 100% that we need. Now, if we have the money, sure, that's great. Let's find it. Let's see what we can do. Maybe we truly believe that we're doing everything the way we should, but an independent auditor can say, wait a minute, stop for a second. This looks great. However, if we move in this direction, no additional money needed, you're going to have this result instead. How brilliant is that for the kids that we're putting out? That's amazing. And as far as Steve, that tarp, my daughter, you know, she graduated in 2020, but we went to lots of football games with her and have been there since and after. One of her friend's dads was handicapped, and it was very difficult for him to even get out of the car, but he wanted to support his son, who was playing football. I'm glad to say that he doesn't have to sit there and stare at a tarp now. Thank you.
And that's all the speakers.
And with that, Chair, I just wanted to bring about, talk about the Town Hall or Town Hall meeting that we...
Okay, I need to close public comment.
Sorry.
At this time, I will declare public comment closed, and so, you don't want to wait for board member comments?
I can wait, that's fine. It just kind of went along with that, that's...
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so I can wait, that's fine.
All right, and then next on the agenda as presented is Dr. Hornick.
Okay, thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. We'll start this evening, Letter B, consideration of revisions to proposed policy JBB. And those revisions from the past meeting were brought forward, and now in front of you for your consideration.
This is a actionable item, and I think, Jim, was it Jim's request that we add this code in there?
Melissa, what's under that?
Ms. Anderson.
Okay, Ms. Anderson.
I, I like it.
Okay, all right. Can I have a motion to accept it then?
I move to approve the draft JBB policy, parent guardian involvement and notification as revised.
Okay, can I have a second?
Second.
All in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Motion carries.
Okay, thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. Next, we are moving to Letter C, and Dr. Honaker and Dr. Wolfrey will come forward to present the Gifted Education Plan.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Dr. Hornick, members of the board. Tonight, we're sharing our local Gifted Education Plan for your review and ultimately for your approval. So, tonight, we're going to share the process for the plan development, and then some of the procedures and processes and components of the plan and the services that we offer. So, in developing the plan, it was a collaborative process that involved Dr. Honaker and I, as well as our whole team of gifted specialists who annually review their processes and procedures and look for ways to improve. And of course, it also included input from our parent advisory that we meet with throughout the year. The process for review of the plan is a peer review that's required by the Virginia Department of Education. of Education. It's a technical review that's done according to a rubric, and for our plan to be reviewed, it was reviewed by three gifted coordinators from three different divisions within the state. After that review, it goes to the Virginia Department of Education for review. Upon their review, they also issue any issues regarding compliance or any recommendations. Based on our submitted draft plan, we did not receive any feedback indicating any recommendations or any compliance issues with their plan. So there are two levels of approval with the plan, being that peer review process and the Department of Education review, and then our local board approval process. And now, Dr. Honnicker is going to talk a little bit about the components of the plan.
So in the plan, we have to outline how we both refer students, identify, and then the services that we offer. So in order for a student to be referred for gifted services, it can come from a variety of different people. A student can nominate him or herself. A parent or guardian can nominate a student for testing, a teacher or administrator, or actually a community member, anyone really actually can if they want to. We have two nomination referral processes that we do each year, one in the fall and one in the spring. Okay, Laura? So once a student is referred and we do get permission from the parent for the testing process, we, as required by the state, we use multiple criteria in order to go through that process of testing the student for gifted services. We have to use a nationally norm-referenced aptitude test. We use the COGAT. We also use the KBIT, which is the Kaufman Brief Intelligence Test. We also have to use a nationally norm-referenced achievement test, and we use our Measures of Academic Progress or MAP test. You've probably heard of that. Our students take that. In some cases, if we need another point, we have also in the past used the Iowa test. It just depends on if that student has been nominated again and needs a different test. So we also look at the assessment of student performance. That's SOL test results, grades, classroom grades, teacher recommendations. Teachers do a summative of what that student's like in the classroom. We also use a behavioral rating scale. It's the Ranzilli Rating Scales of gifted behaviors of students. And then our gifted specialists also do an interview process where they meet with that student and interview them with some questions, and they also do some little tests within that interview process. And then all of those criteria come before the committee, and I think you could go on to the next one. And the committee is the gifted services specialist in each school. Judy and I are on that. We have another person who does science and math there on that committee, as well as the principals from the schools at the different grade levels. Once identified, then our gifted specialist in each school provides services for our students, and we do use a tiered model for that. We try to provide school-wide enrichment opportunities for all students, and we've listed some of those there. Those are for all students in the school, but they also help our teachers, our gifted specialists, and our classroom teachers see if, you know, sometimes they'll see a special gift in a student that then they will bring that student up for testing. So that school-wide enrichment provides things for all students, but also helps us when we're looking for different behaviors of students. The second tier, these students are identified. These are just some of the things that we do. We have cluster grouping. That means in each classroom, especially in grades three through eight, we cluster group students who are identified so that they have a peer group within a classroom. There are accelerated programs. There might be a time when a student has a different class. Maybe it's an accelerated class if they're extremely high in, say, in English or something. They might go on to the next level. Those are all different things that can happen. Once they get to high school, of course, there are programs such as AP, dual enrollment, the governor's school, both the Blue Ridge Virtual Governor's School, and then the summer residential governor's schools that are available every summer to students, honors courses. Our middle school students have a summer governor's school called Summer Quest. And in all of our classrooms, all of our students receive differentiated instruction. That's where the gifted specialist collaborates with the classroom teacher to make sure that the student is receiving work at the rigor and level that they need. Sometimes you have, we use the Tier Three services, and that's probably not as many students, but there are times when there is a student who is so academically gifted to where they need an individual learning plan. Maybe they need to have a course acceleration or a whole grade acceleration, and there's a process that we go through for that as well. So these are our tiered services, and Laura, you can go on to the next. Also, if you'd like to, once the board approves our plan, it will be located here on the gifted and talented services page of our website. Right now, that's, it's not there until the board approves. But we also have the academic gifted model, some other information about the identification process, the nomination forms. These are our gifted specialists listed at each school, and just a brief outline of what our services are, and you can find that on the website. Any questions?
Any questions of Dr. Wolfrey or Dr. Hornick?
I'm sorry, Judy. Sorry.
I don't have any questions. Thank you, ladies.
Thank you. Thank you, ladies.
Hi, thank you, and thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board, and also Judy and Renee will now present their proposed list of participants for the Gifted Advisory Committee, the proposed membership.
We're actually going to also, if we could, Dr. Hornick, just include the Title I along with this since the function --
And the Title I. Thank you.
The function of the committees will be very much the same. We very much value the input of our parents and families, and it's a very important part of our process and of serving our students. So we do have committees for both parent advisory and for Title I parent advisory. Both of these committees give input on our annual plans. In addition, they give feedback on our information nights for parents and other suggestions regarding the best ways that we can serve our students. So they're very important to our annual process of evaluating our plans and providing the best services that we can to students. And we meet with those groups, we'll be meeting with those groups three times per year. So those names are listed for your consideration.
Could you go next one to Laura for the Title I as well?
Are those listed, are those all parents or are those administration and teachers from those schools?
Those are parents from each of the schools. In some cases, there may be a teacher who is also a parent. For example, I believe on Title I, we do have one parent who is also a teacher. We have found that that is really beneficial on a committee because that individual's able to see a little bit different perspective because they're seeing the school side of things as well as the parent's side, so it brings a unique perspective as well.
Would it be an option to have a board member on one of those committees as well?
Certainly, I think so.
How often does the committee meet?
We'll be meeting three times per year. An example would be this week, we have our gifted parent information night. So a lot of the ideas regarding the types of information and activities that are provided for parents are based on suggestions from parents, and then we seek input after that as well.
And what night of week is that?
That is Thursday.
Thursday? At which, here?
Here.
All right. Thank you, ladies.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board, and I know Renee's going to stay put. We're going to bring some information forward to the board. As you know, we've been keeping you up to date, going back even into last school year. We've been very interested in seeking lab school funding that the governor had pushed forward. And our lab school idea is a regional partnership with Madison, Orange, Rappahannock, and Culpeper. And it is called the Future Educators Academy, working in conjunction with Germana Community College primarily with four-year agreements right now from, from four-year institution agreements from James Madison --
And Mary Washington.
And Mary Washington. And so our lab school has run much of the gamut, and it's coming to the end. It was approved unanimously about a week and a half ago by the lab school standing committee at the Department of Ed to go forward for public comment. And so Renee and I are here to give you a little bit about what this lab school will look like, particularly since our goal is to open it in the fall of this upcoming school year. So Renee, I'll let you take it from there.
Okay, so Laura, you can go ahead and go to the next slide. We're very excited about this program for two reasons, because it is meant to help us prepare young people to become teachers, and part of our goal is to get those teachers to come back to their home communities and teach. So this will be a half-day college partnership lab school. Students will apply at the end of their sophomore year, and they will enter the program in their junior and senior years, and they will go to the Germana Center for a half-day and then come back to their home-based high school, whether that be Orange County High School, Culpeper, Rappahannock. They also, they will be preparing students to become elementary and special education teachers through dual enrollment classes. And we worked, we've been working on this since last year, working with the committees from the different schools to make sure that the courses that they're taking will fulfill both their high school as well as the additional things that they would need to earn that associate's degree. So when a student graduates from this program, they will earn both an associate's degree and a high school diploma at the same time. The Daniel Technology Center in Culpeper is where it will take place, and it will include hands-on learning experiences. They will do exactly what a teacher who goes to a four-year school does. They'll go out to the different counties and have teacher practicums where they're in classrooms. The nice thing about this is they'll get to go to all the different counties and different classrooms and grade levels and different teachers and see the different styles. They'll do observations, workshops, and experiential learning. They'll get to teach classes, things like that, just like they would if they were going to a four-year school. The exciting part about all this is because it is funded through this lab school funding is there is no out-of-pocket cost for students to obtain their associate's degree in education from Germana Community College. Zero cost for the parents of those students. So the students apply. It is a lottery-based application, so each division gets six seats. We will be able to send six students our first year, and then, of course, another six will go the next year. But those students will take all of these classes at no cost. The graduates will commit to teaching to two years, for four, two years, in their homeschool division. That's part of the program. So once they go through the program, they have committed to coming back to Orange to teach for two years. We have worked out specialized transfer agreements with James Madison and the University of Mary Washington, and those two schools have committed to providing scholarships and financial aid to have low-cost or no-cost degree completion. So once the student finishes high school with the associates, they would then go and have automatic acceptance into the School of Ed, which, that's really huge. They'll take a lot of those tests that they have to take and all that through Germana, go in, they'll enter as a junior in college, have two years at either at a very low cost or no cost. It depends on the, they've agreed, one of those two things. They were hoping no cost, so we'll see. And those students will have a bachelor's degree in teaching. So we're very excited about this because we're one of the few schools, well, one of the few lab applications that have made it to this level. So we're very excited about that. Laura? The school finance and sustainability piece to this is there is a startup fund. It is for the Future Education Educators Academy would be for the first three years until multiple cohorts are running, so that no cost is for the first three years of this program. After that, the per pupil funding supports faculty, internet access, things like that you see listed here. They're going to be looking for community donor support, and they are going to look to move to like a governor's school model. So the school division's funding, the per slot charge for each of the six kids who would go through this, to try to keep it to where it is no cost for the student. So there's different ways that they're going to be working on that. But for the first three years, we're guaranteed this funding, and it will be free. This is something that's, we're in the process of advertising it to parents. If anyone in the room tonight has a sophomore, you probably got an instant alert last week about these two upcoming information sessions. This is on our website as well. If you'd like to go there, you can click on the link and join the Zoom meeting. We have one tomorrow night from seven to eight, and one on Thursday night from seven to eight, and that will be presented by Germana. They'll talk about the program, what types of classes the students have, the commitment level, et cetera. And we're very excited about this. This is the only one of its kind right now because we're the only one that has gotten to this level. So any questions? I think that was my last slide. Yep. Any questions? Or either me or --
It's a lot of talking, hearing about it, and it's good to see follow-throughs. You've got to find your replacements.
Yes, and it's exciting to know that the students will, you know, they'll get their high school diploma and their college diploma, their associate's degree at the same time. Some people have asked the question about secondary teachers because this is focused on elementary teaching and special education. Once the student gets to the four-year, if they want to go into a secondary program, they've got a lot of the base education classes out of the way. They would just then have to probably take some extra classes than the elementary would for the content area, but it's still available to them to do this.
I'd just like to say congratulations, Renee, on getting it this far.
And Dr. Hornick, and yeah, it's been a lot of --
Because this is wonderful.
It's exciting.
And you know, this is something also we can maybe partner with the Orange County Education Foundation to maybe get the word out and help let those kids know that there are scholarships through that that can help them. Good idea?
Yes. Yeah, it's exciting. It really is.
So, thank you.
Okay.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. Also, on a related topic, during my time in Stafford, I built quite a few connections with key folks, and in early August, the newly designated director of the Academy of Technology and Innovation, who works, who worked in Stafford County, called, and they had also the Planning District, whatever it is, 16, it includes, the Planning District includes Stafford, Spotsylvania, City of Fredericksburg, Carolina, and King George. And that consortium put together a lab school proposal to the state to build and house an Academy of Technology and Innovation Lab School in partnership with the University of Mary Washington. They reached out to us in mid-August, and Renee and I met with Dr. Towery on August 31st. I remember it was the Thursday before Labor Day weekend, and she was interested. They were beginning to move out to their kind of next circle of surrounding counties to see if there might be interest to have students come and participate potentially in this lab school opportunity. And so this past Friday, Mr. Sarver and Renee and myself, we went out and actually took a site visit to Mary Washington. It is actually, the program is housed on their 17 campus, which used to house their master's programs and their graduate studies. And so I took Justin for the transportation perspective and Renee to, and I to really hone in on benefit to students. And we are here this evening to let you know that we believe this to be quite an opportunity. opportunity for students. This platform runs a little bit different than the Future Educators Academy insofar as this, this group would build over the course of the next four years, and moving in perpetuity after that. So the goal is to have, out of participating counties, about 100 freshmen next year in this program. And then the following year, there would be, your freshmen become sophomores, and you bring another 100. And then over four years, you have a, a school of 400 students, all focused on computer science, data science, cybersecurity, the role of technology and innovation. And if you want to scroll through a little bit.
Just one more. There you go.
And so they would, unlike a half-day program at Germana, the students would go to school at Mary Washington. They, they would be there all day, every day, with flex, flex blocks built into the schedule at the beginning of the end of the day to facilitate transportation from the school divisions. Even school divisions like King George and Carolina are, are quite a distance from their high schools to the Mary Washington campus, so they have to, they have to navigate that challenge a little bit. And so we are interested in the opportunity to bring this forward and to participate. They will be establishing, very similar to the governor's school model, a board of directors. And so I, I believe also attached to this agenda is a draft resolution, certainly not for you to necessarily have to take action tonight, but it's possible, you don't have to. But this, this would essentially signify that Orange County is interested in participating, and that we would have a member of our board serve on the board of directors with the Academy of Technology and Innovation. Essentially where we stand when we met with Dr. Towery on Friday is, she has been messaging since we originally met with her to the school divisions about the, how excited we are about this opportunity for students. And she has received no concerns or pushback at all from the five school divisions out of that particular planning district. They do have to officially allow us and take a vote to participate. And so we, we brought this forward to you, for you all to consider as well. I think we will start with allowing Renee to go through the short presentation about the program. That's kind of the 35,000-foot overview, but I'll let you go from there, Renee, and then we can go from questions after that.
So again, this is the Academy of Technology and Innovation, and what's really interesting about this is the students will go there for their full day, but they will still, like if they want to play sports or be in clubs or things like that, they still are, are student, and they still come back here and can, and take part in that.
And still graduate from Orange County High School.
And the diploma would be-
They're still our students and our ADM, so.
Yeah, they would, and they would have a seal, very similar to the Blue Ridge Governor's School seal that is on the diplomas. You can see, these are, this is the, the way it will be set up. It's an interdisciplinary approach with personalized learning. She talked Friday about how some of the classes she's hoping will even be taught like by the Mary Washington professors, so students are really getting that college feel from this program. If you want to go on to the next. Here's an example of some of the electives that will be offered. I won't read them all to you, but you can see that there's a lot. It is technology-focused, so it is for a very specific student. It's not for everyone. But the way we look at this is, this is another opportunity for our students. We have Blue Ridge Virtual Governor's School. We have students apply for that, starts in ninth grade, they stay with that for the four years. Here's another opportunity for our students. Maybe there are some students who are really interested in technology and innovation, and this would, this would meet their needs as well. They, I like the fact that they have a senior capstone prod, project at the end. I always think those are, are good for students, once they've gone through something like this, and really gets them ready for that next-level, college-level work. The funding, again, is coming from the same line of funding that our Future Educator Academy is coming from. This is another lab school application that's made it this far. I think there are very few, and this is one of them, and it's kind of exciting that Orange has the opportunity to be involved in both of them. So the grant funding, local contributions, which is less than what our per pupil expenditure would be, and alternate revenue streams. She's looking at grants and things like that to also supplement the cost of the lab school. Okay? So this is estimates, but this is kind of looking at year one through year five and ways that the cost for the district, as well as fundraising, things that they would have to do to make up the difference. So, Dr. Hornick, do you want to say anything about this, or it's, it's kind of laid out, but?
Yeah, it is. And Dr. Towery was very judicious in when she was looking at the local contribution estimates. Out of the five participating school divisions, Stafford, Spotsylvania, King George, Carolina, and the City of Fredericksburg, out of the five, the lowest, the division with the lowest per pupil expenditure on average was King George, at around $10,630. Ours, as of last year, was $10,690, so we were $60 more than King George. And so essentially, the, the per pupil expenditure is, is within the range for, for us to participate, because our, our financials, so to speak, in that area are very similar to King George, as well as Caroline County as well.
Any questions about this?
I know, Justin, if there was anything, if you wanted to add from the transportation side, particularly early on.
We, it's important that while it sounds like Stafford would be quite a distance, we do currently transport students to the area for various outside placements for our students with special needs. So it's an area that we're familiar with, and we will be able to, at least in the first year, potentially share some of those resources and try to keep the costs, global costs down for that. Seems like a very exciting opportunity.
I have a question. The different jurisdictions, some of them have more than one high school, so how, how was, they're going to decide how many students come from Orange?
I think she was going to look at our total school population, and she didn't give us that number, but it would be based on our enrollment. You know, like a larger school division's going to get more seats than Orange would.
I mean, did I understand that it's going to start, one grade is 100, and then add 100 each year, and the total end would be 400?
400.
So it's going to be 100 slots the first year?
Correct.
The question is, how many of those slots are going to be available at Orange?
Yeah, if, if we join, then she would look at all the populations of each of the counties, and we would get a proportionate number of seats based on our overall enrollment.
That, that's one of the advantages that Blue Ridge Governor's School had, just in administration, that all the counties involved in that only have one high school.
Right.
So we all share equally, but obviously it's not going to be shared equally probably here.
Any other questions? We are hoping that you will consider this and look at it, and let us know, so that we can let them know whether or not we want to move forward, so. And Dr. Hornick has more information if you need it. So, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Renee, and thank you, madam chair, members of the board. We are down to letter H, so Mr. Honaker will be coming forward. This information is coming to you, we, in late September, we received word that the state budget had been approved. And then the Friday before last, we received our state capital template, which told us exactly how much funding is coming to Orange County in the state budget, not the locality, the state budget. And there were kind of three, I guess, major areas overarching that the state budget addressed. One was it began the repeal and took a pretty significant chunk to repeal the support staff cap, which is very much appreciated. It included the state's portion of funding for a 2% pay raise, and it also included the, the flexible per pupil spending, which is tied into our all-in initiative for tutoring to combat chronic absenteeism, and to make sure all of our teachers are prepared for implementation of the Virginia Literacy Act. And so Mr. Honaker is here to seek approval, and then we will send this over to the board of supervisors.
I think Dr. Hornick did a great job of describing what the supplemental appropriation is for. Again, we're separating in two areas, one in the operating fund of $799,613, and then the ESER fund of $1,773,909. So, anyone have any questions for me or Dr. Hornick?
Nope.
I thought the ESER funds were federal funds.
Well, it's, that's, that's a great question. And this fund, I named it ESER fund because that's where we were putting all the ESER funds. But what this fund is for is, it doesn't, if, it's, this program, this $1.7 million is for multiple years. So these other ESER funds were for multiple years, and actually was a suggestion from the county that we put it in a separate fund, so that we don't have to get it re-appropriated every year. So the, so the 1.7 will, whatever's left at the end of this year will carry forward to the next year, so it doesn't have to be re-appropriated if it's in a separate fund from our operating fund. So that's why it's in that one.
Okay, I understand.
Yeah. Thank you.
And so with that, when we talk about the, the flexible per pupil spending, as men, as you all know, and many in the audience likely know, the state sent out spending targets for the money, and targets for 70% being funneled to learn, for the learning loss and the all-in tutoring initiative. 70% there, 20% for professional development and ensuring that we are all squared away to, to fully implement the Virginia Literacy Act, and in particular IMSE training for our teachers and staff, and then 10% to combat chronic absenteeism. And so if you go to letter I, please, Laura, this, this is for the board's information. Last Wednesday, we finalized our spending plan from the Virginia Department of Education. And as Mr. Honaker was saying, what is unique about this allocation of funds, or this infusion of funds, is that it is 1.7 million over three years. And so we have to be judicious about how we spend, but you can see within the three areas and the categories, this talks a lot about our plans for, and I really want to talk in particular about the, the largest chunk, which is the tutoring initiative. This infusion of funds has enabled us to do quite a number of things. Primarily, we have the ability now to enhance our pay for tutors from $23 an hour to $40 an hour for teachers to do work before school and after school with our students, as well as Saturdays. It will allow us to address, we have transportation. Mr. Sarver's been working diligently to ensure that we have bus transportation from all of our secondary sites after school, as well as transportation for all of our elementary sites after school as well. So we are able to offset all of those costs. And just to apprise the board, we are also going to be making efforts to apprise our community and seek tutors who want to come in and assist. So tomorrow at 4 o'clock, I know Judy can't make it, but Renee, we're going to drive down, and we are going to be meeting with a group, a group of folks within the Lake of the Woods Lions and Lionesses Club, who have a lot of retired educators, as well as a number of other folks who I, I believe are interested in doing some of this work. We are also working with many retired educators from our Academic Scholar Institute. We have apprised a chamber as well, as well as Rotary, and so hopefully Crystal is working on getting us some FaceTime with members of Rotary who might be willing to come in, whether it's on a volunteer basis or a paid basis, to assist our teachers and our staff members in providing high-intensity, on-grade-level tutoring to our students. The state has actually reached out to me, Jeremy Rayly in particular, and they are interested in watching the developments in Orange County and using us as a spotlight district for how to, for implementation and the results that we're going to get. And so we have a lot of work before us, ensuring that we have training for all of our tutors, whether they be our staff or not our staff. We want folks to be on the same page when we need a commitment. We are going to make sure that, you know, we're tracking attendance, and we are tracking student performance, using pre- and post-assessments to make sure that we are seeing the results that we want to see, and then ultimately leading to improved outcomes, both on end-of-course tests and in just our, our students' readiness upon graduation. The state was very interested and really liked our effort to reach out to community and, and solicit their help and support. They were very impressed that we were not quote-unquote "just going to focus on grades three through eight," which was, which is the area. We, we are going to take a K-12 approach, and if students need assistance, we are going to provide it to them, regardless of what grade they might be in. And so we are really excited about being on the forefront and received a call and, and just did an interview today with a, with Radio IQ out of Richmond, who was, who had called the VDOE and the governor's office about school divisions that were worthy to speak to, and they, they provided our name here in Orange County. So that's also very important to me, that we remain proactive and on the forefront and not reactive and waiting for things to happen. So this information here is for, for, for the board to know. This was submitted last Wednesday, the 18th, is I believe the date that I signed it, and we are looking forward to getting this approved. Well, I'll let you know when it is. And this spending plan will be linked, and it will go live right on the VDOE website for, so it will be very much transparent and out in front for people to see. Also tied in, I'll, I'll stop there to see if there are any questions, or Renee, Judy, if I missed any components. All right, and so really, this spending plan here addresses in, in the supplemental appropriations request, the 1.77 million into the ESER fund. Also, and I can bring Dr., or Mr. Honaker forward again, as you know, part of the state budget brought a infusion of money, 213 some thousand dollars, if I remember, Gary?
806.
213, 806?
7.
7, for a 2% pay raise. And we will, we will request approval of this recommendation. Gary has been, just as, as an aside, Gary has been crunching numbers, and obviously we have to come up with an additional portion, more than what the state is allotting. And do you, I know if you wanted to speak to that, Gary, I know you feel confident that we would be able to accomplish that without seeking additional appropriation of, from the locality?
It would, it's a cost of an estimated cost of $516,000, and so we would need an additional 2, 302, 193 for that.
I have a question.
Yes.
So when the, so this particular amount, if they, if it is changed next year under the budget, we've already locked all these employees into a 2% increase, how do we worry about covering it again next year if they don't give us the same amount of money?
Well, it should, hopefully will be in their new SOQ numbers, so it should be in the budget for next year. The SOQ number will go up from the state, which is addition, was where they calculate that, so yes.
Okay.
And what we are also trying to do- And what we are also trying to do, we would like this pay raise to be from what folks are currently making.
Correct. Yeah, the decision was made to just take the scale and add 2% instead of going back to last year and adding seven, or it would be a total of 7%. They've already done the five. So, by using this year's scale and just sliding it across 2%, we're able to give them a little bit more money anyway.
And is that equal 2% for everybody? Everybody gets the same 2%?
It's everyone in the operating, but yes.
Okay.
And again, I'll reinforce that we would be able, we feel confident we're able to accomplish this without seeking additional appropriation from the Board of Supervisors from a local budget.
Correct.
Okay. Any questions?
No, well, just a technical question. We keep approving our budget when more money comes through. As long, as long as this money keeps coming our way, it doesn't require supervisors to okay it in any way?
Well, we, we're asking for this as a supplemental appropriation.
Yes.
So, we'll have to get it approved by the Board of Supervisors. Yes.
Right. We were, we were bringing this forward, and that's why when we go back to the supplemental appropriations, they are also getting to the end of their meetings for the year, and I believe they only have one in November. And so, when this got rolled out from the state, it really didn't jive too well with our meeting schedule. What we are seeking here is for your approval to send this appropriation request to the Board of Supervisors, for them to address, the word I had, they would like to address it in November. The state did tie a January 1 implementation date for the 2% pay increase to go into effect. And so, this letter H is seeking your approval for us to send that forward for the Board of Supervisors.
Is everyone comfortable doing this?
Sitting on it, in a delay that exactly the way you laid it out.
Well, the supervisors, I think, have one meeting in November.
I'm willing to make that motion.
Okay.
Presented by Mr. Honaker.
All right. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor by saying aye or questions?
Any discussion? Go ahead.
No, I have no.
Okay. All in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Motion carries.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Madam Chair, members of the board. Again, it was, this is one that we could not change the timetable on, just based on when, when the information came to us. And we did not have the Calc tool or the information at the last meeting. So, appreciate your flexibility with that. And so, apologize for the length, but Madam Chair, members of the board, appreciate your time. And that is all this evening for reports and recommendations.
I will say, it's quite an honor to sit at a state level and hear that your division is being discussed for great things in the Commonwealth. Makes me very proud. So, all right, at this time, there are the, Mr. Hopkins, you should have some legislative positions.
Yes, I, I represent the Orange School Board and the Virginia School Board Association. And we have a meeting in November. And as part of that meeting, one of the most important things they do is, is vote on legislative positions. Now, Virginia School Board Association has many, many positions. What we're talking about here tonight, for example, the one, it's called 8.1, all we're actually, all they're doing, the decision is not the whole thing. The decision, or what they're asking Orange County to vote on, is do you want to add the line that's underlined? That's all you'll be voting, that's all I will be voting on, that's all we're discussing tonight in this legislative position number one. Not the whole position, just, it's recommended that we add that particular line. And the same goes for position number two, position number three, and position number four. I would like to just limit the talk to positions one, two, three, and four. Personally, I don't see any problem with it, but anybody want to talk about one, two, three, or four?
In regards to the current legislation from the VSBA, I believe they are, that they are presenting to us, I think these would benefit Orange County. However, I don't think the VSBA represents all of what Orange County needs. I know for a rural area such as mine, some of the items in last year's proposals, last year's proposed legislation were not feasible. They don't represent me or my constituents. I find it hard to understand why a lobbying, a lobbying group such as the VSBA can change, can charge a percentage of our budget in the amount of $9,052, sorry, $9,052.52 as of June 2, 2022. I was not given the newest amount for this year, or was I given the original contract to see what was included in those charges. In addition to these charges, we as a district are also charged for individual classes/conferences. Quote from our membership invoice, it says, and I quote, "Dues are based on a multi-factor formula that takes your school division's annual funding into account. What other agency business charges a percentage?" When I became a board member in January 2022, I was told that attending VSBA conferences and classes was a mandatory requirement. Yes, taking classes on, on school board matters is required by law. We are not required to join or take part in the VSBA. I have since found other options that some I have paid out of pocket for. I would like to remove our school district from the VSBA as a whole. If other board members would like to continue with them, it should be a, on an individual basis, not the entire board. We as a district have a delegate, a senator, and a congressman that represents four school divisions. I would like to propose that we have a member or two of this board, and if the other divisions would like to join, set a meeting with our representatives to express and create legislation that will help Orange County and our surrounding school divisions. Thank you.
You're welcome. All right, Mr. Hopkins, back to the positions.
I understand what she's talking, talking about. First is, as individual school board members, we do not, we're not members of Virginia School Board Association. They will happily remind me of that when I criticize them, because they say, "We don't represent you, Mr. Hopkins. We represent the Orange County School Board." But if I lobby for them and do what they like, then they give me awards, so it's sort of funny. But my point was, we're not members of Virginia School Board Association by individuals. They represent the whole board, and it'll have to be a board decision. If you want to be members of Virginia School Board Association, it has to be a vote of the board, because it's the board that's the member, not the individuals. But that, this is off the subject of what my, what I'm supposed to speak about tonight. Let me go back to the question I asked again, on these first proposals, is there anything that anybody would like to discuss?
No, I'm good with them.
Okay. Now, I almost just gave you the four, the four that were numbered, but for the first time, they listed about six others that were not recommended, and, and they actually put them in the document. That's the first time I've seen that. So, it's a little hard to discuss them, because there's no numbers by them, but we could probably go by page numbers. My recommendation is that we probably not get into it, because some of them would be quite controversial. I couldn't support some of them myself, and I imagine others would be the same way, just since the people were here that were interested in money. One of the last ones, I won't go into it, but it's asking them to lobby the General Assembly, so we can have public-private agreements without going to the supervisors. Well, that would be a disaster, because you can make a public, a public-private agreement to build a high school. People do it all the time. And we're not building high schools in Orange County without going to the Board of Supervisors. That's, to me, that's sort of silly. That's, but anyway, what I'm, what I'm, what I'm saying is, I don't think we need to discuss the last six that are not numbered, because the only way they could get to the floor is to have a two-thirds vote by the delegates to suspend the rules. And I don't think that's going to happen. So, I, I don't think there's any reason to discuss this, because they're, they're just, I've been in that delegation for over 10 years, and you're not going to get two, two-thirds to, to expand, to suspend the rules. So, and that's all I have to say. We can vote on this at the next meeting.
Okay. Yep. Thank you, Jim.
concludes my part.
Okay. All righty. So, we're down to closed session certification.
I have one thing for under, for member.
Okay. Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay. So, while we appreciate your comments at our board meetings, while I think it's important to have public comment, addressing each question is not productive here in this setting. I would like to propose we hold monthly or bimonthly town hall meetings to be held at each school district's elementary school, with the district's school board representative at that school, possibly the superintendent and other administration as well. We haven't really worked out the fine details, but obviously, any feedback we can get from you on how you would like these set up would be appreciated. We would like to offer a more intimate setting for your questions and concerns to be addressed pertaining to things to be approved on, things you feel the school needs or doesn't, et cetera. Discussion of staff, student personals will not, will have to be a one-on-one conversation. We can, we can work out the details and create some kind of agenda. So, I would like to just, as a board, come up with some dates that y'all feel that would be good for you and your district, and we can present those at November 13.
Okay.
Thank you.
Sounds good. Sounds like a great idea.
I was wondering, do we have active parent-teachers associations in our elementary schools? I'm sure they're looking for things for a program.
Always.
And I think we let them know that we would have a board town hall as part, we could just make it part of their program.
That's right.
I think, I, I, rather than try to make a call, a special one for us, just let us opt in with them, and I think that they would be a prover of it. All we have to do is get it scheduled and so forth.
Sounds like a good idea.
Thank you, Jim.
All right. Mr. Jones?
Ex-Man pursuant to 2.2-3711A of the Code of Virginia, the Orange County School Board will convene a closed meeting for the following discussion of personnel, the performance of. Ma'am?
I can hear you.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Had to check my, how's that?
Still good.
Still can't hear you? How about in the back? No? The buck can hear me.
You want to try mine?
Does mine work?
Yes. There you go. Do that one.
How you doing?
All right, let's start over. I will say, pursuant to 2.2-3711A of the Code of Virginia, the Orange County School Board will convene a closed meeting for the following discussion of personnel, the performance of a division employee is authorized by two point, Section 2.2, 3711A1 of the Code of Virginia for resignation, termination, transfer, employment, salary adjustment, and retirement of employees. Discussion of pupil personnel as authorized by Section 2.2-3711A2 for early admission, waiver of compulsory attendance, out-of-county, out-of-district requests, and student discipline. You need that motion for, pursuant to that 2.2-3711A of the Code of Virginia, the Orange County School Board will convene a closed meeting for the following. Good.
Thank you. Can I have a second?
Second.
All in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. We're in closed session.[1506.13]